Good evening. Going to call this meeting to order at 7:26. I apologize for our delay. Thank you all for your patience. Adila?
Roll call.
Sue?
Here.
Elpern?
Here.
Ken?
Here.
Lindsay Ryan?
Here.
Weatherston?
Here.
Hernandez?
Here.
Tanya Booty?
Here.
We take this time to acknowledge that the land we meet on is the traditional homelands of the Council of Three Fires, the Potawatomi, the Ojibwe, and the Audaua.
This land also served as an important meeting place for Miami, Ho-Chunk, Emanamani, Inoka, Sauk, Fox, Peoria, and Arapaho, Cheyenne, and other tribal nations. This land has long been a center for indigenous people to gather, trade, and maintain kinship ties. Located at the intersection of several great waterways, the region has become the site of travel and prosperity. We acknowledge Evanston and John Evans are tied to the massacre of the Arapaho and Cheyenne for railroads and westward expansion upon which John Evans developed his wealth and founded Evanston. This land was violently taken under settler colonialism through genocide and open warfare, and the region that is now Illinois and Chicagoland is still home to thousands of native people who are actively struggling for sovereignty, self-determination, and justice. The genocidal acts of settler colonialism extended to peoples of Africa and their enslaved descendants. Despite Illinois eventually prohibiting slavery, slavery was an accepted practice before and after statehood. The vestiges of slavery remain present throughout the United States and directly affect the descendants of enslaved peoples, descendants who defined, who helped define the African diaspora, rich and heterogeneous communities descended from African peoples. The genocidal patterns of violence against peoples of African descent and indigenous people have been replicated to exclude and harm people from many intersecting marginalized identities, religious minoritized, disabled, and LGBTQ identified peoples by POC and PAC writ large in the United States. These patterns of violence demonstrate that the pursuit to end state-sanctioned violence against BIPOC is a daily struggle for liberation from continued social, political, and economic anti-black racism and oppression. Today, we acknowledge that we are living, breathing, loving, grieving, laughing, and sharing space on unceded territory. May we learn to honor the historical and contemporary presence and power of the people and their belief that we must be caretakers of the lands and waters for the livelihood of future generations. The land that surrounds us is part of who we are. It reflects our histories. It is within District 65's responsibility as an academic institution to disseminate knowledge about Black and indigenous peoples and marginalized peoples writ large, consistent with our commitment to equity. We will work towards sharing truth and promoting healing for the sake of our children and families. It is important to understand the longstanding history that has brought us to reside on the land and to seek to understand our place within that history. Land acknowledgements do not exist in the past tense or only in a historical context. Colonialism is a current, ongoing process, and we need to understand our present participation. We encourage everyone consuming this message to continue expanding their knowledge and reduce their harm through awareness of mutual, of local mutual aid models for survival and engagement with online and local resources such as the Chicago American Indian Community Collaborative and the Shorefront Legacy Center.
Thank you, Biz. Next on our agenda this evening is a public hearing regarding school improvement days. The District 65 Board of Education convenes this public hearing at seven twenty-nine PM to receive public comments on the district's proposal to allow for up to two full, full-day school improvement days per school year for a maximum of five years. This proposal would require a modification of an Illinois school code. Each speaker will have three minutes to make their comment.
Are there any speakers that would like to comment on the school improvement days?
In the absence of any comments, this will conclude the public hearing considering the school improvement days at seven thirty PM. The board will vote on this proposal at tonight's meeting. Number five on our agenda is public hearing for the tax levy. The truth in taxation law requires that the district hold a public hearing prior to the board approval of taxes to be levied for tax year 2021. Each speaker will have three minutes to make their comment. Is there anyone signed up for comment for the tax levy public hearing? In the absence of any commenters for this public hearing, this will conclude the public hearing considering the 2021 tax levy at seven thirty-one PM. The board will be voting for the approval of the tax levy at tonight's meeting.
I move that the Board of Education approve the meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Elpern?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lindsay Ryan?
Yes.
Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Tanya Booty?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to first say we are coming close on our winter break and excited that this has been, while this has been a challenging year for us all, we know that everyone's giving it their best, and we will continue to do that as a school district and thankful, thanking our parents and our students, our board members, our teachers, our administrators for putting in the time. This is a, I never thought in, in, in all my time that I would be experiencing these things regarding how do we move education to a place where it's not gone before under conditions that's once-in-a-lifetime, generational pandemic. But I can honestly say I'm proud to serve as superintendent and that we've given it, we've given it everything we got, and we will continue to do that as an organization. We've also had some incidents of, you know, there was the, there was the shooting in Michigan that took place a couple of weeks ago, and we had in our district of some scares, and we don't take them lightly, and I want to commend the staff and our EPD team members for really working hard to get to the bottom of the incident that we thought, that we got note of on Thursday night. We were able to, you know, get the threat assessment and get into, get that situation covered. We know that there's a copycat culture that exists, and we will take every single incident seriously and do whatever we can to keep our students and our staff and our families safe. Well, I think it's also important that we talk about, like, our process on how we go about handling these situations when they do arise. So I would like to talk to our team, Dr. Kilgotti, Mr. Little, and Director Palmer to come to the podium to share just a brief update with the public around how we actually organize to make sure that we're communicating with our families. Please come up. Again, I thank our parents who gave us information. Our students were really helpful in this last incident. It's, we can't, we gotta do it together as a community, and it's, it's been, while stressful and challenging and scary, we were, we're excited that we are still able to, you know, get to the bottom of these situations as, as they arise. So, Dr. Kilgotti?
Yes, good evening, Board. So this evening, Mr. Palmer and Mr. Little and myself will speak about different components of planning and responsiveness. And so first and foremost, I'm going to invite Mr. Palmer to speak to the, really at the, at the base level of all planning around emergency is preparedness and prevention at the school-based level. So Mr. Palmer will first speak to that, and then I will follow up with some of our district coordination plans, and then Mr. Little will speak about our district incident critical team.
Thank you, Dr. Kilgotti. So I first wanted to mention that this year, as a Director of Culture and Climate, some of my roles has expanded. So myself and Dr. Kilgotti, we both serve as the incident commander of the district. So we are the first responders when there's a crisis that may occur. So I'm gonna, we're gonna walk you through the process and let you know what that looks like in District 65. So just for starters, when we talk about crisis prevention and, and just overall safety of our students, I think it's important to capture and mention that District 65 prides itself on being a restorative practice district, which means ensuring that safety is occurring starts with building those relationships within the school system, making sure that the culture and climate is overall empathetic and nurturing. As a child, if you feel like you're supported, you're nurtured, and there's an environment where it's welcoming, then if safety were to occur, then you feel like you're more supported, and we feel like it's going to prove to be positive outcomes through that process. So once again, safety doesn't, safety doesn't occur until we know that the environment is nurturing and empathetic, and I had to make sure that that was at the forefront of our presentation. So when we talk about what does safety look like in our building and some of the directives that we're asking our building leaders to do, we have what we call our school crisis management teams, and we have our crisis management plan that each of our schools are compiling and they're completed within the first month of school. And after checking, today, we've, we have everybody's crisis plan within our, within our districts. So out of all eighteen of our schools, we have the, the plans that are prevalent. We have, I'm sorry, we have our, if you look on my right, our five drills, our fire evacuation, our bus drill, shelter in place, our active shooter drills, and our reverse drills. All five of these drills are done annually, and they are to be completed by April. But our active shooter drill, that's completed within the first ninety days. So we have schools that have already done it, and we have schools that have it scheduled for this week or right before we get out for Christmas breaks. So these are some of the initiatives that we do within our district. Next slide. So just wanted to go over a couple of the safety practices that we do in District 65. So there's standard bullying and safety practice and badges that are prevalent in all of our schools. We regularly, regularly review our buildings to check, making sure that, that things are in place, that buildings and things are able to let up and let down, that there aren't things that are broken. We have annual updates for our school crisis management workbooks, and we're also coordinating drills and tabletop exercises to ensure that everybody understands the expectation. And before we go and dig a little further, I'm gonna introduce Dr. Kilgotti, and he's gonna introduce our district safety team.
So as a district safety team, we have a number of individuals who really work collaboratively to ensure that when a crisis raises to the level where it's either cross-department or there's a need for coordination with the police department, we have a district safety team that will step in to assist in that. And so on these, there are individuals who have different roles. As Mr. Palmer mentioned, myself and him are serving in a co-incident commander role. I would step in if it was a lead in a situation where he arrives first or vice versa. Dr. Horton, for example, would serve in a policy role. He wouldn't actually go to the scene of where the crisis would. He would step in and really be more as a policy person where I would reach out to him. Melissa Messenger would serve in a public information officer role. And so we have these different titles, and individuals work together. And so in the situation, not everybody's necessarily activated depending on the nature of the situation. So if there's a threat, for example, that comes in to assess what's happening, a certain number of people would be called. We would then engage in a communication plan. Now, we've worked with Evanston Fire Department and Police Department to really think about the levels of support. Not every single incident's going to require a district safety team to respond. Every school has a school-based crisis team that would, we say, respond to a situation. So if there's a level three, we call it, and these are not hard, fast, you know, the police is very careful and the Fire Department are very careful about putting these hard, fast rules because things can be dynamic. Something can start very, let me say, very fluid in terms of the level of intensity of a situation. So we have to be careful about, we have to always just be monitoring the situation. So certain, what we would describe as level three or two are typically situations that can be handled in the school. Maybe it's a power outage, maybe there's an anticipated risk of something outside the building. The principal would be the one who makes a decision on those. The principal remains as the incident commander of that building. When something moves to level one or level zero, it may be, for example, a, a threat, like the one we experienced last week where it's going to take multiple individuals in addition to the principal, multiple communications, district-wide communication. And so level one or level zero where there's casualties, God forbid, we want to avoid, these are the kinds of situations where really the police department and the fire department become the incident commanders. We become secondary to their direction. In the past, we've held drills with the police department where you will see, they will, they won't even engage us in the situation until it's time. So, okay, we need to know where in this drill where you would want to move students in this situation. So we would come in as a secondary party to that. And so you would set up what's called an inter, kind of an inter-command station. So these are kind of the levels that we would use. Now, in any of these situations, and this is a reminder to everybody really, is that the first step, if there's a threat or an emergency, you call 911. It's amazing when you go through training for active shooter training or any of our trainings, that's, a lot of times, believe it or not, they say that the first mistake people make, they call a friend, they call a loved one rather than 911, right? So the first, just as a reminder, 911 is the call we should all make if we're in a situation, a difficult situation that requires police support or fire support or ambulatory support. Second, really, on our end, as incident commanders, we would notify the team. Number two, working with our public information officers, start to draft communications of what's happening, review this, what's happening with the superintendent and the policy role say, like, here's what's happened. Of course, he would notify the board to let them know. From moving from there, depending on what the situation calls for, assign roles, enact plans in those situations, and then move to ongoing communications. And then it's that kind of a cycle of assessing. Now, I didn't go into a lot of the details around a relocation reunification plan, which each school would then have, because we, if it's a situation that requires a high level of support, we would move to then having to relocate a school. In a situation like we've had where there are threats, we're going to make sure that we're then communicating with our communities on an ongoing basis. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Little to talk about the critical incident team, which is a part of what gets enacted when we are moving into enact plans. So when we're thinking about what happens next, we would then, one of the groups that we would really, one of the teams we'll call upon is our critical incident team.
All right, ever, good evening, everybody. Our district critical team, look at it as a resource. It's a resource for our crisis team. The purpose of it is the critical incident team operates in a district-wide capacity to attend to the emotional and psychological well-being of the District 65 community by assisting schools to prevent, prepare for, respond to, and recover from school crises. Remember, once again, it doesn't have to be a major crisis for the district-wide critical incident team to be requested by the school leader to go inside of that school. We're looking at the social-emotional part of the school building. It can be anything from a student who had a death in the family and it's just uncontrollable for that student, to where the principal or the district-wide person is asked for support into that building, and to where it's some adult crises with some of our employees, and we just need that extra touch to go inside of that building to help out, to ensure that we're not disrupting our instructional day. So we would just want to make sure that not only do our students have that opportunity for their social-emotional healing and to be brought back into a peaceful environment, we also will make sure that our staff members and those in the building receive those same type of services and purposes. We can go to the next slide. I don't have my contacts in, so I have to look on my screen a little bit. Our district critical incident team also has, is, is a nine-member team. On that nine-member team, we also have altern, alternates who, and we receive training roughly, professional development roughly once a year. On that team, we have a district-level admin, we have a social worker, we have a psychologist, a building-level admin, counselors, and our mental health practitioners. And of course, like I said, once again, we have some alternates just in case things happen to where they're not here, but we want to make sure that we still provide those services at that school without missing a beat. Of course, our mental health practitioners also provide wraparound services to families at home and things of that nature. So like I say, we're looking at it from a holistic approach to where we are not only addressing the needs of our families inside the school, we also are able to have a little outreach in the community to do where we can go to the homes and provide those services to our students' families when needed. My district-wide critical incident, incident team procedures. Step one, critical incident support requests made by the district safety team to Anna Marie or Romy. Step two, Anna Marie and Romy connects with building principal and school-based crisis team to identify and discuss supports, needs, and goals related to the crisis. Once again, we got to understand what our goals are. We have to know where we're going before we get started. A lot of times, it's like boots on deck, we get to moving, sometimes we move in the wrong direction. So we want to make sure we have that discussion first of what that goal is, and that way we're all moving on the same page at the speed of light. Step three, critical incident response team members and roles are identified. Once again, everybody has to understand what their role is in this situation because it might not be that way in every situation. So we just want to understand that everybody know what their role and their job is. So we just wanna understand that everybody know what their role and their job is in this situation that's at hand. The critical incident team leads, coordinates meeting times, dates with principal and school-based crisis team. Once again, we wanna make sure the principal stays afloat of what's going on in the situation because even though they still are running the building, they must understand what's going on inside of this meeting. So they will make sure that they're scheduling that time to where they can debrief with the principal and they have a total understanding of what's going on. So once again, we're all on the same page and that's the key to resolving these issues and demobilizing them and bringing everything back to peace. Number five, Anna Marie and Romi to follow up with the critical incidents facilitators to offer a facilitated debriefing session. So once again, with debriefing, because we want everybody to be on the same page, we're also working through some of our issues and problems that we have with that step to sew up any problems and make sure that we're, the next time we do it is even better than this time that we do it.
Thank Dr. Horton.
I'd like to thank you all for sharing. I know there's other portions that we don't share, you know, publicly, but this is important for us as, as a school community and our board as, you know, actually, we're, we're very transparent with our process and we wanna be sure that you know what our steps look like. And if there are any questions, you feel, please feel free to email us and, and you have other recommendations, we're definitely open to listening and hearing if, if there's some expertise out here under this current culture that we're living in, in our world right now. So thank you all for doing that. That's my comment.
Thank you. Just had a few board comments. If anyone else has any to share them after I read these. There's nothing that a global pandemic asks more of us than flexibility, resilience and acceptance of change. I didn't know this two years ago, but these past two years have taught us this quite well. Despite that truth, it is also normal to be tired. We are all exhausted physically, mentally, emotionally. I know I am. I know our administrators are. And I know our educators are too. But we have humbly accepted the honor and privilege of doing work that rightfully centers children and families. In my five years on the board, that has been prior, that has been a prioritized culture and climate shift for racial equity. Collaborate, listen, build through a racial equity lens with children and families at the center. Not adult issues, but children and families. For the sake of our community, our institution and the most vulnerably impacted, we must center the children and families, not adult egos, not nor adult comfort. We must all center children and families. Board, administration, or excuse me, we must all center children and families, not board, administration or DEC ego. This tenet remains. As such, much of the recent mischaracterizations, factual errors and harmful rhetoric being used to describe District Sixty-Five's board and administration's relationship to our educators has been shocking, harmful, disheartening and truly unacceptable. We do not desire to ever engage in a public tit-for-tat, but what we do want to operate in accuracy and truth as a community. We are also aware that unfortunately, there are some educators and former employees that are experiencing discontent in response to increased levels of accountability. However, transparency, collaboration, the needs of children and families are core tenants of our governance work and our expectations of administration. Thus far, we've refrained from public discussion of the private relationship that we have with our bargaining units outside of the legally mandated communications we must make. However, because of some dysfunctional adult-centered decisions to publish one-sided false accounts of work and relationships that have served to harm, we made the decision to make a statement today. As such, we want to let our community know that we have taken seriously and been responsive to every wide-reaching educator mental health need that has been brought to our attention. We listen to and communicate frequently with our DEC educators' union leadership, both the board and Dr. Horton. We meet monthly to talk as three stakeholder groups with more frequent touchpoints between each, as often as weekly, daily even at times for administration and union. We have made a number of responsive course corrections this year as a result, including suspending educator performance evaluations to alleviate anxiety, transitioning the November half-day professional development time to teacher-led time, holding a half-day facilitated discussion between DEC, board leadership and admin to help with relationship building and alignment. And lastly, Dr. Horton, I'm sorry, and Dr. Horton held two virtual town halls with educators and is halfway through holding lunchtime chat-and-chew visits with each campus to engage with educators directly, at which board liaisons also attend. Lastly, two and a half years ago, District Sixty-Five Board and educators negotiated a contract exclusively through interest-based bargaining, including finances, which is unprecedented in a good way, sharing priorities and interests and centering children and racial equity through a shared moderated process rather than one that was combative or wrought with conflict and arguing. We will continue to listen to educator feedback as we move through another challenging school year. To be completely transparent, after all of these efforts, there have been some concerns or questions raised publicly and/or privately that have been brought to our attention in ways, in ways and with content that is new to us. While we deeply care and have been responsive, we cannot be responsive to issues that are not brought to us via the communication pathways that are available. You may wonder why this happens. We wonder as well. Standing structures and communication pathways have been put into place in order to facilitate a thoughtful and functional way to ensure decisions at the highest levels of this institution are informed regularly by the experiences of educators, children and families in our buildings. This remains our moral and ethical governance body obligation. In order to invest in a functional culture and climate for children and families, we ask that all adults use the appropriate systems and structures available to them, social media nor op-eds being one. Additionally, as we lean into a culture and climate of collaboration, we need to understand the nature of shared responsibility and voice. It necessitates shared accountability as well and a willingness to compromise by all parties. A racial equity lens also asks us to center the voices and needs of the most vulnerable in our system, that is children. In this decision-making matrix, we acknowledge that functional adult relationships heavily impact vulnerable children's learning, access and environment. We also acknowledge that adult comfort does not take precedence over children's rights and needs. We further acknowledge the role that well-paced and communicated change management plays in all of this and we take responsibility for that. We will continue to center that understanding and val, and those values into how we make decisions, communicate, learn and grow ahead. Lastly, it's critical that we acknowledge as an institution and community that industries across the nation are experiencing staffing shortages and educators across the nation are experiencing high levels of stress as a result of the pandemic. All of our efforts and their potential effect will be impacted by this additional context. Thus far, as reported by our DEC leadership, to us, many of the gestures that we have made to improve culture and climate and work relationships have been well-received. The board and administration have invested earnestly and in good faith into these relationships and we will continue to adapt and listen while maintaining a responsibility to keep children and mutual accountability to them at the center of all we do. And if we have any other board comments now would be the time. That being said, we'll move on to our high-five awards.
All right, here is some recognition time. This is really one of the best times of, of any board meeting where we recognize our staff. So Melissa Messenger, come on up.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. Welcome, everyone. Tonight, we have the honor of celebrating two of our staff members selected as our December recipients for our high-five recognition program. Now, in its fifth year, we've now received hundreds of nominations and honored over eighty licensed and support staff members for their tremendous work. Just to remind everyone here tonight, the nomination form is available on our website so you can continue to recognize our tremendous staff for their work. We'd also like to thank Byline Bank for their continued support and sponsorship of the program. This evening's recipients will receive a hundred-dollar gift card and a framed recognition certificate. Tonight, we're recognizing two recipients, Mr. Jim Janicey and Ms. Martha Morris. Mr. Janicey is unable to attend as he's at a school-related event at Evanston Township High School tonight. And then I'll ask Ms. Morris to come up after we recognize Mr. Janicey. He's an orchestra teacher in the music department at Haven Middle School and has served our students and families for over twenty years. He was nominated by a D-sixty-five family member who's chosen to remain anonymous, but shared that Mr. Janicey is an extraordinary educator who excels at teaching orchestral components and helping students feel connected and proud of their accomplishments. When students were learning remotely, he came up with fun and unique ways to keep them engaged with funny videos and entertaining remote lessons. Before students returned in person this year, he sent a welcome-back video to his orchestra students, which made students excited to return. Since guardians could not attend curriculum night, he created an orchestra virtual open-house video, which allowed us to really feel like we were in the classroom and kept us connected to our child's education. As students are back in the classroom, he is an engaging, kind and talented educator. I'm so excited for my daughter to be able to continue learning with him. Mr. Janicey asked that it was noted that he would have liked to receive the honor in person, but that he had a conflicting special event at E T H S this evening. So thank you to Mr. Janicey for going above and beyond to engage your students and inspire their musical pursuits and passions. Next up, we have Martha Morris, who I believe is with us today. Do you wanna come up, Mar? So Martha is our site coordinator for the school-age childcare program at King Arts and she's supported our students and our community for thirteen years. She was nominated by a D-sixty-five family member, Carolyn Tang Kamet, who I don't think is here with us today? Who shared, "Mrs. Morris goes above and beyond ensuring her students are engaged and happy. It's not an easy job, especially given the broad age range. Despite that challenge, I see many cross-grade friendships defined the King Arts SACC program. I see her develop curriculum plans, like teaching the kids about wind and having them make windmills and paper airplanes. Stuff like that goes beyond what I would ever expect in an after-school program. She keeps her team engaged too. If I could nominate her whole team, I would. Whenever they encounter a problem, they don't complain about it, they just find creative and safe ways around it. I am so grateful to know that my daughter is in a fun and safe environment." Martha, we thank you so much and I think you have a few words that you wanted to share?
I did briefly. This is a big honor because I just started in this position, starting in August. Previously, I worked as a TA, but I never realized how, how essential the SAC program is. I know that there are other programs that's been instituted in the District Sixty-Five schools. However, SAC has been so instrumental because many of the people that work in SAC are actually alumnis of Evanston School District. My daughter went to SAC when she was younger and I feel that this is a way of giving back. And as many of the other members that also work in SAC, their children probably went to SAC when they were younger. And we're the first, with the early morning program, we're the first to see the children when they're coming in and we're really the last to see them when they're exiting. And that is so, so crucial because we, we don't know what these children have been through early in the morning. So it's very important that we set a nurturing environment. I heard many of, of the scholars here have mentioned how it's important to nurture and have a good environment for these kids. So this is not only our job, this is to make sure that these children feel safe, they feel welcomed and that they can continue, when they enter, that they can continue through the day. And then at the end of the day, we know that parents are picking them up, they're gonna jump into dinner or whatever. So we make sure that they're calm, that they have a good time, that they can really let their hair down and really enjoy being in the after-school program so that when they go home and go through the routine, at least they had a break from being a non, from being in a non-structural environment and to be able to just share with friends and forget about the everyday-to-day cares, so.
Next on our agenda this evening is public comments. Members of the public are welcome and invited to address the board during open public meetings. Speakers are discouraged from using the public comment period to air specific concerns about staff members. Being mindful that the public comment period is not a suitable forum for fact-finding or resolution of disputes. Rather, we encourage members of the public who have concerns about specific district employees to follow district communication guidelines found in the student handbook. Please remember to state your name and that you have three minutes to address the board. Also note, it is not customary for the board to respond to public comments. The best way to correspond with members of the board is by emailing schoolboard@district65.net.
And Adila? The first speaker we have signed up is Mary Foster. Thank you, everybody. And the topic I have today is transparency. And I wanna start with saying as a, as a parent of two kids in the district, the way the, the shooting threat was handled was amazing and just top-notch, great transparency. Felt very good about that situation, you guys were all over it. So that was a real, that was a real win. I will say though, on the other hand, I feel like there could be an opportunity for improvement with transparency into incidents between administrators and educators. with transparency into incidents between administrators and educators. The impact of these issues to students can be pretty significant, especially if they're directly impacted. And students now more than ever need routine. They need routine, and they need that feeling of a safe environment, like we all do, and consistency. And that's been missing for my child for a month, and I really want it back. So that's why, you know, I think that transparency is something that we really should work on and work together to fix issues quickly instead of letting them percolate and letting that environment get less and less comfortable on a daily basis. I know that privacy is important, and I'm not going to mention names, but I do think that even without sharing names, I think transparency is very possible, and it can be accomplished, and issues can be resolved quickly and without repercussions by still respecting the privacy of individuals. So I'd love to see that happen. So my ask of the board is to commit to more transparency and faster resolution for issues that are either still open or yet to come, specifically between administrators and teachers. We need a safe and empowered environment for our students and teachers, and this can only be accomplished through trust and, again, that other T-word, transparency. So, thank you.
Next, we have Melissa Oger.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. And my name is actually Melissa Oger, and I am the parent of two fifth graders currently, and then we also have a high school student. I'm a practicing physician, and I speak to you today to let you know how much I understand and can speak clearly on pandemic stress and its role in job dissatisfaction, impacts on emotional health and personal well-being. As a parallel, there are many publicized reports of healthcare workers leaving their profession in droves. My experience as a member of a large local hospital system and various large international forums for women physicians specifically is that when physicians leave their jobs, it quite often has more to do with their local administrative support within their own department and the hospital as a whole, and much less to do with the overall state of the world. We are all dealing with pandemic right now and the fallout at work associated with it. But when you are well-supported by a leader who values and respects you, it's easier to handle the challenges and roll with the punches. When you feel minimized and disrespected, it is much harder to choose to continue to come to work each day, especially at a job that is demanding at baseline. As a parent, it seems clear that the issues the teachers at our particular elementary school are dealing with are more than just the pandemic stress felt by all our local teachers. Their stress seems to be exacerbated by animosity with our school leadership specifically. I feel that a lot of our teacher complaints and concerns at our school are being pushed aside as universal pandemic stress and not given the attention they deserve. No matter how much you love your job, your patients, your colleagues, and in this case, the kids you teach, it is exceptionally difficult to continue to show up every day when you feel belittled, disrespected, and silenced when voicing your concerns. We ask that you do better by the teachers at our school. Truly listen to what they are telling you and help them make a difference. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Mark Fennel.
Hi, thanks for letting us address you here tonight. I'm the father of two students at Lincolnwood Elementary, and I'm addressing you tonight about, again, a lack of communication and transparency at Lincolnwood. Specifically, about four weeks ago, myself and other parents received an email from the school summarizing an incident that resulted in a teacher being put on leave. The email only had the barest of details and cited employee confidentiality as the reason, nothing more could be provided. Since that time, many of the affected parents have requested additional information regarding the incident and have requested information on the plan for getting an experienced teacher in the classroom. Only after many weeks of demands have we started to see action. Yesterday, we received a follow-up email that disclosed really important new information about the incident. And it leads to the question, why did it take four weeks? Why was this information withheld and now is being disclosed? What other information is being withheld under the pretense of employee confidentiality? Why were we told after weeks no information could be given to us, and then new important information is disclosed? We've heard rumors that there's an ongoing internal investigation. But these are only rumors. What is being investigated? If there is an investigation, how long will it go on? As everybody's been saying tonight, there's a teacher shortage. Everybody is tired, and it seems like if there is an ongoing investigation, it hopefully should be wrapped up very quickly so that we can get a qualified teacher into the classroom. At the end of the day, what we really want is a great teacher in the classroom. I think we can all be aligned on that. And I think that the transparency and the information flow helps build trust and helps everybody get to that goal. Thanks for your time.
Next, we have Christina Schreiner.
Hello, thank you. I'm Christina Schreiner, and I am a parent of four District 65 students, current seventh grader, a current fifth grader, and twin third graders. So if you're counting, that is seven consecutive years of students at Lincolnwood Elementary. And I want to say the patterns that have emerged over the past four years in discord between the staff and administration is beyond concerning. There's a pattern that's far beyond and not caused by the current national teacher shortages. Currently, in Lincolnwood, there are a total of sixteen teachers and three to four additional support staff members who have been there more than four years. So if you're counting, that's eighteen teachers in the past four years who have left for varying reasons. This total doesn't even include the fact that this year alone, we've lost a fourth-grade teacher and currently have three staff members on leave. But as I arrived here today, I heard of a fourth. So we're down yet another teacher at Lincolnwood. With the exception of the remote learning, three of the past four years at Lincolnwood have seen teachers take leave in the middle of the school year. What does that do to our kids? As an educator myself, in my twenty-third year of teaching, in a building with four times the staff members at Lincolnwood, I can't recall a single colleague choosing to leave mid-year in the past four years, including now, as pandemic burnout and stress stresses the educational system. What's happening at Lincolnwood is beyond troubling. There's evidence of the root cause of Lincolnwood's climate issues and distrust. We're doing our children a huge disservice to continue in the direction that we're currently heading. Parents were explicitly told last week during a fifth-grade Zoom call that exit interviews happen. I would love if these interviews from the eighteen Lincolnwood staff are being reviewed. In the event that they did not happen, exit interviews, I would encourage you to reach out to those staff members for comments. I learned recently that Dr. Horton and Ms. Weatherspoon had the opportunity to check in with Lincolnwood staff, and I'm so grateful for that. I want to say thank you sincerely. It means a lot. It's become apparent through various firsthand accounts that many at Lincolnwood, right, there is a toxic and unhealthy work environment for our teachers. I would encourage you to provide the same opportunity to meet with other parts of the Lincolnwood community, parents, caregivers, students, et cetera, who can also provide evidence of their experiences because we're doing our kids a disservice. Thank you for your time.
And last, we have Kelly Baldrate.
Good evening. I'm Kelly Baldrate, and I am co-chair with Marquise Weatherspoon of D-65 CPAC. We are families of kids with disabilities whose mission is essentially to increase the felt sense of belonging for our kids and their families, something that is too often lacking. Tonight, I bring an anecdote, a preview, and a promise. You may recall that when I spoke earlier this year about inclusion, I offered my sense that disability is sometimes an afterthought in equity discussions. As it happens, I experienced something this week that illustrates this. One of the district schools reached out to us to invite us to a courageous conversation about disability, which sounded great, but the meeting was scheduled for one week later. Still, when I heard, I thought, well, I wish I'd known sooner, but maybe I can go and offer an important perspective, et cetera. It took a couple of email back and forth for me to understand that we were actually being asked to facilitate the discussion one week prior. When that finally computed for me, I'll be honest, it felt a bit like a slap in the face because what I heard is that kids like mine and others like him are afterthoughts to be shoehorned in at the last minute without a lot of thought or preparation. It was hard for me to imagine PTA leadership feeling okay seeking a last-minute facilitator for a courageous conversation about another group. I hope and trust that this meeting has been postponed because I would love to work with this school to plan a more robust and thoughtful meeting in the future, which brings me to a preview. Of course, CPAC is working to host conversations like this and has just engaged a terrific group called the Nora Project for a Disability 101 presentation at our next meeting in early February. Maybe it's a bit snarky to note that that is seven weeks out at least. It may be along the lines of what this school was seeking, to lay groundwork for an understanding of and attention to the barriers disabled kids often face that others tend not to notice. The Nora Project has actually agreed to retool its usual presentation to better suit our audience of family members and community members, so please expect further details, and we hope to see some of you there. Finally, the promise. You may be sitting there thinking, I hear you, and I'm sorry that happened to you. But what can we, parentheses, the policymaking body for District 65, do to help create the sense of belonging kids with disabilities and all kids deserve? If so, you're in luck. Here's where I commit, at least, to get back to you. CPAC is starting to engage with current policies and think about changes that might benefit this effort. A joint effort with CPAC working from the ground up and this body empowered to work from the top down would stand a much better chance of advancing sustained change that might outlast the particular folks who happen to be here now. I want to close quickly, if I can, by thanking you all, board and administrators here, for the challenging work you are doing in yet another incredibly challenging year. It is in part because I see and appreciate those efforts that I feel comfortable enough to come here tonight and speak to this and confident that when I return with more concrete suggestions from CPAC, we will be heard and our suggestions will be thoughtfully considered. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Crosby, and my son is a District 65 student. I just wanted to comment that having the school shut down two days before Thanksgiving was like really horrible for a lot of people. People that are working too hard and that are too tired to come here tonight and talk about it. I almost forgot to come to this meeting, but I'm glad that I did. And I will say, I was not personally affected by this. My husband, unfortunately, is home, so whatever. My kids stayed home for two days. What do you expect adults to do when they find out on Friday that there's no place for their children to go on Monday and Tuesday? And, like, I get the point, y'all were in a bind, but maybe there's some things you could do. For example, shut down the middle schools and leave the elementaries open. That would have saved a lot of people being able to go to work those two days. My kids here at JEH, imagine finding out you have no infant care or toddler care for Monday and Tuesday. You know, it is stressful right now, and teaching's a hard job, but if teachers could take a mental health day coordinated with their principal, my sister works at a hospital, and so it's like, hey, you know, you can't have a mental health day this week because Joe is having a mental health day for these two days, and I can catch you, you know, next week or something. Or, I mean, worst-case scenario, I don't really know what all the regulations are, but you could maybe have a day off at school. You know, like, let's show a movie in the gym for part of the grades and then have an extra recess and let the teachers wear sweatpants to school. You know, when you're not supporting the adults, you're not supporting the kids, and like, the most vulnerable families got hit by this. You know, so, I mean, just brainstorm ideas so this doesn't happen again because, I mean, some people may not have been able to pay their bills for that month when they lost two days of work. Tuesday is my big day, my biggest day of hours, and I didn't have to worry about that. But, you know, if I hadn't had my husband at home, what was I supposed to do with my three-year-old? And kids that are under twelve can't stay at home. And I think it's kind of actually telling that the folks that would probably love to stand here and say this to you don't have the time or energy to come because I'm actually surprised that there aren't more folks mentioning this. Thank you.
Thank you, Adila. We missed one important...
All right, Agenda number nine is the proposed action items. I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendations outlined in the attached group motion and approve the personnel appointments, leaves, and separations, the November 2021 Board of Education meeting minutes, the destruction of the November 2019 closed session meeting minutes and recordings, the October 2021 list of bills, the September 2021 treasurer's report, and the budget amendment, the November 2021 contracts over $25,000, the gift acceptance for Dewey Elementary School, the fiscal year '23 budget calendar, and the fiscal year '23 student fees and transportation fees.
Second.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Kellburn?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Lindsay Ryan?
Yes.
Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Tanya Moody?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
All right, we're going to loop back to an announcement that we missed earlier on the agenda.
We just approved.
That we just approved.
Yes, so we have the opportunity to be introduced tonight to someone that's going to be special for us. We've had a search process for a new leadership at Oakton Elementary School, and it was pretty competitive. We had some really great candidates, but there's one candidate that stood out more than others, and we would like to introduce him to the community tonight, to the board. And he has a few words. We'd like to bring up our new principal for Oakton, Mr. Christopher Robinson.
Thank you. I just want to thank the parents, the teachers, school board, Dr. Horton, for trusting me in this leadership role. I look forward to working with the teachers, working for the parents, and I'm going to ensure that all of our children at Oakton Elementary have access to an equitable and quality education. So thank you, and I am deeply honored.
Congratulations and welcome. And we'll move on to approval of the driver's retention proposal. I move that the Board of Education approve the driver's retention proposal.
Second.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Kellburn?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Lindsay Ryan?
Yes.
Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Tanya Moody?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right, this is the approval of the application for school improvement days. I move that the Board of Education approve the modification of school code and application for school improvement days.
Second.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Sue.
Yes.
Hildern.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Lindsey Ryan.
Yes.
Weatherspoon.
Yes.
Tanya Booty.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Item 12. I move that the Board of Education adopt a 2021 tax levy.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Sue.
Yes.
Hildern.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Lindsey Ryan.
Yes.
Weatherspoon.
Yes.
Tanya Booty.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
I move that the Board of Education approve the FY '21 financial audit.
Second.
Second.
Hernandez.
Do we need a discussion? If there are questions, they come after the second. Like, if we have to discuss.
Rafael, Kathy, are you prepared to run through the presentation that you had last week for this?
Yeah, the presentation was provided to the Personnel, Finance, and Building and Grounds Committee by the Audit Fund.
Can you share some highlights from the audit?
So we have unmodified or clean opinion. There were no findings of any kind in our audit. Our auditors from Baker Tilly reported that the actual results were better than what we budgeted. We actually ended with $3 million of additional revenues primarily because of the pandemic. Several of the expenditures were unspent. And they also reported that our projected ISB rating, financial rating, actually will be improving. Last year, it was 3.8, which is the financial recognition, the highest rating with ISB, and with the 2021 results, actually will be increased by 10 points to 3.9, and again, financial recognition.
I think also a highlight that I would like to point out, the Archer also stated that the Business Office cooperated substantially with the task of the audit. All the documents that were requested in order for it to be completed were provided in a timely fashion, and based on the conclusion of the auditor, the district is in pretty good financial shape, excellent financial shape, and it's been well-managed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments from the board?
A lot of paper. So thank you for all the work, and we really appreciate it, you know, having the auditors come and give the presentation last week. I think if anyone has any questions, last week's recording would be very helpful.
And the audit will be posted online.
Thank you. Yeah, I would just comment that when I first came to the board, this is not what our financial discussions or updates ever sounded like. I want to express my appreciation for the professionalism and the expertise that has gone into helping us get to where we are today, and also to my colleagues for the oversight and the wisdom and guidance that you all provide that help us to prioritize getting our financial house in order to make sure that we're able to have the flexibility to do what we need for kids and families. So I think we're ready for a roll call.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Sue.
Yes.
Hildern.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Lindsey Ryan.
Yes.
Weatherspoon.
Yes.
Tanya Booty.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next is the resolution abating the working cash fund of the district. I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution abating the working cash fund of the district.
So just by the way of summary, this is part of the process required to do the refunding for the Series 2021 bonds that we just refunded. And I wanted to point out that the original bond that we're refunding, the district was paying 2.76 yield on it. With the refunding that we did, the new rate is 1.40. And one of the key reasons for that is that the rating of the district has gone up substantially, and the additional money of $1.2 million that we receive is purely interest rate paid. So we did not extend the due date of the bonds. All we did was just reduce the yield that we will have been paying on those bonds, and the goal is to use the $1.2 million that we receive at closing towards capital projects in the district. So by law, what we have to do is technically the refunding is considered working cash, even though we don't really need working cash, it's just a technical term that is used for it. So the abatement really means we move that money from working cash to building and grounds fund, and from there, we move it to the capital project fund, capital project funds, which is where the money will be expended. By law, we have to go through that process, the compliance process, and that's the resolution that we bring before you this evening. Thank you.
Once again, thank you, Kathy and Rafael, for your work on this and helping us find opportunities to fund the things that we need to fund. Does anybody have any other questions, comments regarding this item? All right, I think we're ready for a roll call.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Sue.
Yes.
Hildern.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Lindsey Ryan.
Yes.
Weatherspoon.
Yes.
Tanya Booty.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Excellent. So the next item on our agenda is to adjourn. With no further business before the board, I adjourn this meeting at 8:34 PM.